What's that?
We're on the air.
Oh, okay. All right, so, sorry we're late. We're gonna open up the Board of Selectmen meeting for... It says Monday, but actually it's Thursday, December 10th at 4:37. So, I guess primarily we have the discussion, clarification of duties for the interim Finance Director, Personnel Director. So, Jason, do you wanna start? Is that a good place to start?
Do we wanna start with the...
How do we say it, the 2021 tax classification?
Oh.
Get that done and out of the way.
Yeah, let's get that out of the way. Uh, let's see. Fiscal year 2021 tax classification hearing, the Board of Assessors and Board of Selectmen will hold a classification hearing at 4:30 PM on Thursday, December 10th. The Board of Selectmen, upon hearing data relevant to the fiscal effects of available alternatives and upon recommendations made by the assessors, will decide whether the town will continue with one tax rate for all classes of property or adopt multiple tax rates. The public is welcome to attend and give in comments. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Uh, one person.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give the report on behalf of the assessors for the board when you're ready for it.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Thank you. So, at the current time, you have a minimum residential factor of one. As the board knows, you have a legal right to shift the minimum residential factor up or down in order to provide a shift to property, residential property owners and have them pay less taxes than they would otherwise be assessed for, or more. And the recipient of that shift is commercial industrial property. Now, you have traditionally not done that for the very obvious reason, you have very little commercial industrial property. Consequently, even a small shift off of residential taxation would, because of the, your residential tax, residential property in Groveland is 92.96% of the total base. So, if you shifted even a small percent off of residential onto business and industry, which represents 2.5 commercial and 2.1 industrial, you would be impacting them dramatically and dramatically increasing their tax bill. For that reason, and since we've got so little business and industry, we certainly don't wanna lose what we've got. So, for that reason, you have adopted a residential factor of one for, I'm told, at least the last 20 years and probably beyond that. So, um, the recommendation, obviously, is that you continue to adopt the residential factor of one, and that is the report from myself on behalf of the assessors.
Yes.
Is there a particular motion we're supposed to make? Usually we get the printed motion.
I don't have a particular printed motion, but I think it's just acceptance of the residential factor of one, which I think we do.
So, I move that we continue with the one tax rate for all classes of property in Groveland.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. And just as an update for the board, with that now done, in this special meeting tonight, let us get this done a week, two weeks before, when we would've had it done on the 21st. That puts us a little bit ahead. So, I actually spent a couple hours on the phone yesterday with Department of Revenue going over the remaining things left on the recapitulation submission, and there's a whole bunch of small things, nothing major that we know yet. So, this will be put in in the morning. The town clerk will put the attestation in that's required of the vote tonight. We'll put in the residential factor of one. That, then, the, the work that you do to set the tax rate is kinda like a whole giant row of dominoes. There's a whole bunch of reports, and as you put those in, it autofills other fields and other reports, and it allows us in series to review the different sections and then release them, submit them, and then that in turn causes other parts of it to be submitted. So, tomorrow, or Saturday, I'll go log in and I'll start looking at those and submitting all those reports that are tied up pending this. And then Sue Worley, the woman from Department of Revenue who reviews our submission, indicated that hopefully she'll be able to do that next week, and we'll actually be all set with the tax rate hopefully a week or two earlier than necessary. So, so that's all good news. Keep your fingers crossed, because, you know, there can always be, when you get all these things in, problems can pop up as you're getting all these things in. But basically, what she told me is that we look like we're in pretty good shape overall and close to finalization, so that's good news.
And do you know when we expect to, when we get all of that finalized, when we expect to go through the printing process and...
They tell me that it's...
That might look like...
It's already loaded. The tax bills are already loaded. We just have to put this MRF of one in and then tell it we're ready to print. Now, we can't physically print until we get the tax rate back.
Right.
That's the last thing to put in. And we, you know, I can see, on the worksheets that I'm doing, I can see, you know, preliminarily what the rate is. There's a, there's one weird little anomaly in there. It says that you levied a million dollars more in taxes last year than you're allowed to, so there's a mistake somewhere. I gotta find that. Once I find that, yeah, obviously a mistake, but once we find...
Can't for my property, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I thought you said that would be good news. So, once we, once we find that and fix it, and they certify all the records, then we'll get the rate, that goes on to bills, and we could be running them, you know, depending upon getting all these little, little small glitches squared away, we may be able to run them just before Christmas, we may run them right after, but, you know, we've got till out, we've got that week between Christmas and New Year's before we need to get them in the mail, so we're actually in pretty good shape.
Well, my offer still stands, so...
And I remembered your promise to help stuff, so...
Help what?
To help stuff envelopes, so...
I'll do it.
So, you never know.
That's what it takes. All right, so that's taken care of. That is good news. And now we're on to discussion and possible vote, clarification of duties for the interim Finance Director, Personnel Director. Now, can I go to Jason?
Yes, absolutely. The first thing I wanna say, Kevin, is personally, I really feel that you are overqualified for the job. You're extremely dedicated, committed, compassionate about getting the job done and doing it right. I have no question that you're gonna focus on what needs to be done in a timely fashion, regardless of how much noise is out there. You know, for the past three days, I've, I've thought a lot about what I was gonna say and did a lot of research online and, and looked at some things, and of course, now that I'm on camera, I'm drawing a blank, but...
Oh, it's Murphy's Law. That's why you gotta take notes. That's why you have notes.
But regardless, the, um, the big thing is, I think you said it at the last meeting, is you've done things, some of the employees weren't happy and they came to the board, and so that started a chain reaction with the board, because everybody understands that when there's a transition, transitions are hard. The town did vote to basically give the previous Finance Director town administrative duties, and just not the title. And I think Joe recognized that, and that's why he put together the government committee to try to rectify that, especially after talking to him for a little bit of time. So, when you look at what you have there, and that's what you expect to do, because that's what you were given, and I understand that. But there's, there's some things that I don't necessarily agree with, and one is having the town employees go through you before getting to the board. And the reason I'm not a big fan of that is because I think that elevates the board to a level that they shouldn't be. I'd like them to have direct access. The other thing is, I'm not sure if you realize, but sometimes you can be a little offensive, harsh, and intimidating, and some people feel that you attempt to put your thumb on top of them. Some of it might just be because they've had a lot of freedoms that they normally, wouldn't normally have under an administrator, and of course, change is difficult. One of the things that I would show as a example of not thinking about the, the experience and the tenure of somebody that you might be talking to, is Monday, when you told the board that we weren't, what exactly did you say? Capable of conducting an interview, I didn't know how to conduct an interview. I know from the expression on Bill and Mike, they were offended. Myself, I don't get offended, I just try to rule with everything. And because of that, I think the board should move towards utilizing the liaisons that they had originally set up, whether they get redistributed, 'cause I know I'm a little new, in an attempt to act as a buffer. I don't wanna circumvent your authority, especially when it comes to the budget and things like that, because you have to get that done. But I think if we, as a board, utilized the liaison as we should've been doing all along, I think it would give the board more interaction with the boards, the employees, more knowledge of what's going on, hands-on, instead of just getting information. I think that would allow the board to make better decisions, more informed decisions, and become more efficient and productive in our meetings. And also, I think it could allow us to be a buffer for some of those employees that need that buffering during this change. I know that the transition can be difficult, especially because you're temporary, and some people look at that and see, well, that's not what a Finance Director should be doing, even though, well, yeah, 'cause you are more of an administrator, and that is what the role is. And if, if we were there to buffer some of that and take some of that heat and control it a little bit better, I think it would smooth over the transition a little bit better. That is my proposal, and that would be my goal, because I want you to do what you do, because I think you're good at it, I think the town needs it, and I think the town would greatly benefit from it, especially moving forward. But I don't wanna do it at the expense of some of the employees that we have, because we have very good valuable employees that, and we've always run so lean. When one person leaves, it becomes a very big deal, and so, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Anybody, have anybody else they wanna, do you wanna say anything?
No, I'd like to hear his response to some of those.
Oh, well, if, if anything I said to the board Monday night was offensive, you have my apology, because I don't intend to be offensive for obvious reasons. Bill, Mike, if I said something offensive, you guys know, in the short time I've been here, I don't act that way, so I apologize. What I was trying to say, and I might've said it, um, you know, I'm, I've been accused before of being very direct. When somebody's being nice, they say direct. When somebody's not being nice, they say harsh.
Yes.
Point of the matter is that I tend to be very direct. That's, that's, that's absolutely true. I'm not a PC kinda guy, to be honest with you, although I do try to be very respectful of people, but sometimes, when I say things, it can come off as harsh and strong. What I was trying to say to you is that I think the board has to be careful about assuming it can do things for which, any board member can do something for which you are not trained, just like, and I think the, the example I use is a dentist. You know, none of us would say, hey, I can go do the work of a dentist, I can't do the filling, but I could give you the Novocain. Well, you probably could, doesn't mean you do it right. So, my point was, town administrators, especially ones that have been around a long, long time, finance directors, go through a lot of training. I've got a master's degree, and I've had thousands of hours of post, and that's supposed to mean, I hope it does, that I'm qualified to do the kinds of things that you need me to do, and it's a profession. It's not, it's not something that just anybody can walk in the door and start doing. There's a lot of training and experience. So, what I was trying to caution the board to be careful of is to assume duties for which you are not trained. That's what I was trying to say, not to be disrespectful in any way, or to suggest... I mean, I suspect you've all done, interviewed people for jobs, and you can do that, but there are also things, when you're interviewing people, by way of the process, how you do it, questions that you're not allowed to ask and things like that, that HR people, town administrators are trained to know what those things are, and I kinda...
And I understand that, and it's not what I really wanted to do. I just wanted to, as you put it, you were direct.
Yeah.
And, and it can be mis-instrued.
Sure, of course it can.
For some of the employees that have expressed that, I'd like to take some of that burden off of them.
So, the idea of having the board have liaisons, we, we really didn't get into that much Monday night, it was, it was brought up, you know, I don't have any objection. I mean, here's the thing, folks, you don't have a charter, and you don't have a bylaw that lays out the form of government. So, in Massachusetts, the form of government, absent a charter or a bylaw providing otherwise, is the Board of Selectmen runs the town. That's the law in Massachusetts, and that goes all the way back to the 1700s, when, you know, we started all our communities and Boards of Selectmen elected to run the towns. Over time, and, and by the way...
Can I say a point of order, please? I mean, or point of information?
Yes.
I think we all know that our town is run by bylaw and open town meeting, we all know that. We know this. We know how that, we know the direct, we know what the Board of Selectmen is...
We actually don't...
...supposed to do.
Kathy, you actually don't have a bylaw. That's my point.
We do have bylaws for all of our boards, have you, we do.
Yes, but you don't have a bylaw that lays out a form of government, like a charter would.
But that, but we run on a sequence of bylaws for all of our boards. That's how each board knows what it's supposed to be doing.
Yes, I've read, I've read the bylaws.
Yeah, and that's it. That's how we do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Ed, anything else?
Um, yeah, just a couple comments on what Jason had said. In, in the past, we were told they didn't want the workers going direct to the Selectmen, they wanted them to go through the Finance Director. And what Jason is, is alluding to as far as the liaisons, liaison's a good idea in, in some cases, but it's, it can be cumbersome. And I, I think Kevin's doing a fantastic job. He certainly stepped in and got us out of some messes here.
Hey, cumbersome, cumbersome to who?
Excuse me?
Cumbersome, when you say cumbersome, cumbersome to who?
Cumbersome that, uh, they may not, they may not work well with the person that is the, is the liaison. I know we had that, we had that in the past, that, I mean, I won't go into the departments, but they, they just didn't work well with the person that was, was the liaison, and they, and they changed, and then things just, things got better, but that, that's one of the hangups. The other boards have to feel comfortable with the person that is the, the liaison, and, as well as the board needs to be comfortable that the information is gonna get to the board, but...
Well, I would say that, in that respect, that we're already kind of doing that with the boards and committees that we're already interested in. Like, I've been with Police and Fire since I've been on the board. I think Jason's been working with the planning and a couple other departments already, because those are part of his interests anyways, and Bill's been working with Finance and some other departments, because that's part of his background. Right, and the same thing for Kathy, she has interests that automatically ties to certain boards, so I don't know that, you know, I would put Kathy with Police and Fire, because maybe that's not her interest.
They won't let me drive the trucks.
And they won't let her drive the trucks. So, I think we're already doing that.
They've said no several times, so...
But I think, you know, I could see where if we were trying to decide where someone is, is a liaison to a board that they have no interest in or no relationship with already, then I could see how that can be cumbersome, but I, I would, my perception would be that that would not be the way that this would work, but...
Could I just say...
No, I'm, it's not done, sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ed.
Um, no, I'm all, I'm all set for now. I'll, uh, I just reserve the right to make comments afterwards.
Kathy?
Well, I, before you even came here, before I even knew who you were, I came on the board for, filled out the end of one-year term, and I've been on the board before years ago, and I said, you know, hey, I'd like to do some, be a liaison, 'cause we've always had liaisons, and liaisons do not handle, like, personnel issues. We don't, we don't tamper in that, because, you know, we know enough to say, okay, this has to be, go through the personnel route. But the liaison, you know, checks in with the department, gets to know more about them, and then brings information back to the board, says, oh, they're doing this, or they're doing that. It's a nice community thing. It makes all of the departments feel like they're included in the board, and one of the reasons we expanded to five members is so that there be enough people to do this, do this liaison thing, so that somebody can liaison with the library, the housing authority, all these people that, you can't possibly go to all these meetings.
No.
And, and select board members are often, like myself, full-time workers and have other things, so you, you don't have the time to go to every single meeting and everything, so I rely on the other members to go to things, and we haven't ever really formalized that yet, since I've been on the board, and before Denise left, she gave me the list of what was going on before, and said, maybe you guys should update this. And I feel like with what Jason said about transitioning, and I mean, we're, we're looking at this transition, then we're looking at another transition, whether we vote Town Administrator or not, we're looking at another transition, and I believe that it's a good time to, to do this liaison thing now, because we all have been in town long enough, we know the people in these, in these departments, and we know enough not to interfere with the daily running of the town. I would never do that. I'm not here all day. How could I? Right? So, I think it's a good idea to do that, and I think that it's the reason we have five members. We're not five members, so we can all sit here and argue Monday nights, and quite honestly, I've heard from a number of voters that until a town administrator is voted, we are the town administrator, and we should step up to our duties. Until this town says differently.
Are you done? Sorry, I didn't know if you're done.
Yeah, I am.
Yeah, you wanted to respond?
No, not respond, just finished my thought from earlier, because, because you don't have a charter, at least at this point. The law is quite clear in Massachusetts, you are the chief executives, and you basically run the town government. So, if it's the board's wish to have these direct communication with employees, to have liaisons, or whatever else you wanna do, that's really up to you, and the staff's job is to understand what it is you're doing and respect it. I would offer you two thoughts if you're, if you're going to proceed with that, and it sounds like there's a consensus building to do it. Two caveats, one is, I have not seen exactly what the Governance Study Committee is going to come out with, but I, I'm told, you told me that they were leaning toward Town Administrator, Town Manager form, something like that. It is likely to be the case, so this is the first cautionary note, it is likely to be the case that they will suggest a Town Administrator or Town Manager form, which may or may not have a clause in it that says the board will not get involved in the day-to-day business, et cetera, et cetera, and it'll specifically potentially bright line saying board members shouldn't, cannot have day-to-day contact with employees. I don't know if they're planning to do it, but that is a very common provision in form of government charters and bylaws, so expect that's a possibility. Understanding that's a possibility, what I reacted to in the last few weeks was the fact that you're not doing that now, you, board members have direct contact with department heads and employees, and if you're going to go from that kind of a system, and then in a year, you're gonna go to a very dramatically different kind of a system, then that is going to be an extraordinarily difficult challenge, because on this day, you're under this kind of government, and on the next day, you're on a different form of government, and the habits that are created when you do the one are very different than what you'll be doing the next day. And so, I would ask the board to consider, to consider that reality, because when you create a system where department has come to board members, I know the board has said... Because when you create a system where department has come to board members, I know the board has said that you don't, and you, you all understand, none of you has any authority beyond the authority of the board. So, an individual board member can't give a directive to an employee. Only the board can do it. But the board needs to be cautionary because I'm not always sure, and if I hadn't been a Selectman for almost nine years, I might not know this, but I was. When a board member speaks even in an informal manner, even your thoughts, even your suggestions carry great weight with employees. Employees are smart people. They know you hire them and fire them. So, when a board member makes a suggestion, it carries weight. And in point of fact, you have to be very careful that even though you don't feel like you're giving them a directive, then in fact you are. Because they react to those things. So you have to be very, very careful of that. That's the first cautionary note. The second cautionary note is just, you know, board liaison ships are normal. That's, that's done all the time in all communities. It's just, there's a difference between liaisonship with committees of volunteers and liaisonship with appointed employees. That's a different thing. So, I just urge you to, you know, consider those thoughts, please. My job is to give you my thoughts and then you decide what you want to do and, you know, we execute it. So, whatever you decide is fine with me, you know, we'll, we'll make the best of it.
Cool.
I just want to touch briefly on, on Jason's comment. I, I wasn't offended. I grew up with a father that taught me to have skin as thick as concrete. So I'm seldom offended by anything or anyone. I was a little taken back by the statement only because you know very little about any of our backgrounds. So to make kind of that broad assumption just kind of threw me back a bit. That was probably the expression he saw. As far as the Town Manager, Town Administrator, I agree with you. And I think the duty that's incumbent upon us as a board is to find that right individual and to take the time and to make the effort to find that right person. And I think I speak, I can speak for all of us here, that we've done an incredibly remarkable job in finding those right people and we have employed them here in the town of Groveland. And we've done that pretty consistently in a number of, of spots, so.
You do have good people. I'll, I'll certainly.
Right, and I think to your point, yes. The wrong hire can upset the entire apple cart and throw away years and years and years of goodwill. So it is definitely incumbent upon us as a board to make sure that we take the time to not only hire, if we move to the Town Administrator, Town Manager form of government, that not only is the individual highly qualified to take us where we need to be, but is the right individual as far as the chemistry goes. You know, sports analogy, you can have a great team, you're bringing one bad player and guess what? You just lost a team, you lost a season and it's all over, right? So, I think we've been very careful, very diligent in making the right hires to make sure that apple cart doesn't get upset, to make sure the chemistry within Town Hall stays balanced, stays happy, stays cordial, stays professional, stays adult, stays focused, stays committed. I, I can think of a bunch of other words, but I think that pretty much sums it up. My main thing, I thought I was coming here for a math session. So, after that, I, I probably pass it on to say, I think maybe the disconnect comes with the wording in the contract where it, it looks as though we're asking you to assume Denise's duties almas when I don't, you know, speaking for myself, mind you, that wasn't my intention. I, I think, again, getting back to the analogy of the deck of cards, I think we wanted you to take some of the cards, not all of the cards. That's why you only have 19 hours and we, you know, shuffled out cards to other folks as well. So that, I, I guess that's where my disconnect comes from in this whole clarification of duties. And maybe that's where the disconnect comes with you, where you may have looked at the job description that Denise had and said, I guess I'm to assume all these duties and responsibilities when I'm not sure that's what we had in mind. At least not, that's what I didn't have in mind. That's not what I had in mind. And other than that, I'll pass it on to, back to the chair or listen to your comments.
Bill, that, that is exactly why I asked Mike for the agenda item because you contracted with me. Contract is a legal document. It's not a, you know, it's not a geez, we think we want this. It's a legal document. And you made me responsible to execute the things in that job description and you can hold me accountable. I.e., fire me if I'm not doing them. The first thing any Town Administrator learns early in their career is, if there's a document that says you're supposed to do certain things, you better do them because somebody eventually will say, hey, it says right here in your contract, you're supposed to do this and you're not doing it. Why are you not doing it? And you can't say, well, I got the impression the board didn't really want me to do that. You can't say it because it's a legal document. It's legal. It's a law. You signed it, so.
Right, and I think we want it, we want to eliminate the ambiguity that existed here last Monday, right?
Right, so the reason I asked Mike for the agenda item was because as I was doing those things, I was getting pushback from the board to not do them. And so I said to Mike, I mean, all I wanted to do was get clarification, guys. I swear to you, that's all I wanted to do. I really didn't think it was gonna generate two meetings and two, three, four hours of discussion. I thought it was gonna be either, nope, you see those five or six things? That's what we really want you to do.
Right.
And we should not have said to you in the contract, do all these things. And, and that's fine. I, I mean, you know, I, when I look at the contract.
It looks like working on an old house, you take down the first wall and you realize you just got to keep going, right?
Yeah.
So it's kind of where we are. We're, we're, in, in, in essence, we're still trying to build a ship while we're sailing it. I mean, that's where we are because of what happened to us. We, we thought we had an excellent candidate. We thought we were all set. We, we thought our ship had sailed and that candidate turned out to not work out, which left us in a very precarious position, which you have been, uh, amenable enough to, to help us out in. And we appreciate it, I think, just the clarification, I think, is what's needed. Just so when we leave this room, I hope that we're all on the same page. I hope we're all in agreement. I hope we're all pulling the rope in the same direction because that's what the town expects us to do. That's what I expect us to do. And that's what I, my, my wish is in 20 minutes that we all come to that conclusion.
So, um, my opinion hasn't changed since Monday. You know, I like the liaison piece. I think that clarifies or addresses some of the issues that Jason brought up, that Bill had brought up. So, I think that will help a lot of things. The question that piggybacks off of that is the HR piece. And I did, after Monday night's meeting, I did talk to Jeff about that possibility and he said, Mike, whatever you need. So, if we do want to do the liaison piece where we have that direct contact and we want Chief Killen to take any HR issue that may come up that honestly is very rare here. I think there was two.
Knock on some wood.
Knock, yeah, two in the last five or six years. So that is very rare here, that he said that he'd be happy to help and do whatever that takes. So, I think, I think we can start looking at who wants to take what. Like I said, I think we're all doing that anyways for the most part because we all have our interests. So, I have my interests in things that I've been doing anyways. I'm happy to take more, but I don't, I don't want to assume that it, it's all going to fall to me. I want everyone to have their piece and be able to do their interest and their interactions with people, so.
I, I personally feel I have a fantastic and professional relationship with everyone in Town Hall and I don't mind picking up any ball that's on the ground that's needed to be picked up. So I'll, I'll start with that.
Well, like I said earlier, my liaisons were fire, police. And I think that was it. Not that I don't have relationship with everybody else, but I think my focus was initially firing police. Ed?
We actually, we, we need somebody at the Town Hall that the employees can go to on, basically like on a daily basis, which was, was covered by the former Finance Director, to get answers to, to, to questions. And if, nothing wrong with the liaisons, but if the employees bring a problem to one of the Selectmen, that, that particular Selectmen can't act without bringing it up with the other members of the board. And that's, that's, takes time. And the, it had always been said that the, the former Finance Director was in the Town Hall five days a week and that was the person that the employees could go to, get an answer and follow that direction. And, and it was, was my understanding that the interim Finance Director was going to do the same thing. Be able to answer the questions. You, you have to understand that it takes time. If, if, if an employee brings you a problem as you are the liaison, you can't make a decision.
Right.
You have to bring it back to the whole board. Though, sometimes these questions have to be answered right away and they need somebody that is able to do that and the Selectmen can't do that. It, it, it might take two weeks before it comes before the Selectmen. And then, so, we need somebody that, that's here every day to be able to, to handle that stuff.
So to that point, Kevin is 19 hours, so Monday, Wednesday. So if someone comes Thursday and needs something answered, there's nobody there to answer it anyways.
He's, he's available by email.
Right.
Yeah, I, I don't want anybody to get the impression that I'm not available to people.
No, but contractually, you're 19 hours.
I can show you my phone and my email and it's very evident that I'm going all day long. I hit 30 hours this week by Wednesday before noon.
Correct.
Now, as I've said to you before, folks, I don't mind doing it because I enjoy it. But I don't want anybody to represent because it's not fair to me that I'm giving you 19 hours and I'm cutting it off because that's utter nonsense. Sunday morning at seven o'clock, I'm working for you. You, you get emails from me. The point is, I think Ed has a very important point that, that you should consider carefully, which is if you give the HR piece, I don't know what the HR piece means. It sounds like you're talking about disciplinary situations or that kind of thing. If you want Jeff to handle that, the Police Chief to handle that, change my contract because you got to do that. And I have no objection as, as long as Jeff's fine with that. But there's a lot more to the HR Director component than just discipline. I mean, I would say there's, there's probably not a lot of that that goes on. But there's a ton of interpretations of the law. You know, I get that constantly, you know, what does the CARES Act say about when somebody gets sick? Well, it's got an 80-hour provision in it that supersedes whatever forms of paid leave you have. Then there's the Small Necessity Leaves Act, Leave Act and the FMLA itself. You have to be trained and understand those things before you can give somebody an answer to the question. I got exposed to my.
Okay.
Family members COVID, what do I do and what's my benefit? So you got to know that stuff and I'm getting a lot of questions about that and a lot of other HR stuff. So, again, this is what I was talking about with training. And again, I don't mean to be in any way suggest anybody does or doesn't have the training, but I know I've got it.
All right, yeah, we're running out of time, Jason.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what Ed's saying and that's not what I was trying to do. I didn't want them, if they didn't feel comfortable going to you. I wanted the employees that don't feel comfortable going to you to come to us. And then we don't have to go to the board to make a decision because we wouldn't be making the decision. I'd be going to you and saying, hey, this is the situation. How should we handle it? And then I would take that back based on what you say to the employee, just to be a buffer. That's it. That's why I didn't think any of that needed to change. And that, I was hoping to help smooth over this transition until the employees felt comfortable going to Kevin.
Kathy?
Yeah, I, we're going to run out of time, but I guess when I think of the liaison, I'm not thinking of liaison to the employee, to the department head. So, you wouldn't be the liaison to the Town Hall, you'd be the liaison to the Financial Department perhaps. You'd be the liaison to Planning and Conservation, you know, areas.
Right.
And that way, if there was anything going on there that they felt a big concern and they didn't want to go to you, the department head could bring it forward, that way, fine, for an interim type of solution.
Right.
I think that's fine. I think that's a great idea to help us make this transition because it's been a bumpy one with this COVID thing and everything. But my biggest concern is, and this is just because of the way I gather information and process it, it needs, things need to be shorter and more succinct because I feel like we're in a little bit of a state of chaos. The budget should be rolling out, the letter should have gone out, the department should be getting their budgets together, the Finance Board should get that budget book on schedule. There's no reason for that to be delayed at this point. It's, it's something we've done for years. The cut in local aid, we don't rely heavily on that aid. We can just say, hey, it's going to be a tight year, the bud, these departments already know it. It's always a tight year in Groveland, right? We've never had a untight year. So, I, I'm concerned that we don't have a list of dates, like one, that the tax bills are going to go out by January 1st, that the budget process is going to start by January 1st. I know the Finance Board had all the appointments set up and I believe they're now changing all that. I, I'd like to see like that rather than a lot more discussion. I need to see it in, I'm a hands-on person, I have to see them writing. I can't sit through four-hour discussions and, and walk away and really know what we've decided.
So, did you want to add anything?
No, just to Kathy's point, I, I, I don't think we're going to go down and talk to Jamie or Tom. We deal with Colin. We're not going to go down, we'd talk with Rennie. The department head, the 50,000-foot level, not in the, not in the micromanaging type of getting their departments and many, that's, that's just beyond ridiculous.
So, did you want to make a motion that we can build on or, we've got 10 minutes if we're going to try and solve.
The world's problems.
The world's problems.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Congressional problems.
Take a motion that we go forward and we, we, we all agree on some form of, of, what do you call it, liaisons? I mean, do we have, we don't have to vote the list, right? It's not a voted list, is it?
It's just a suggestion. Instead of, you don't need to vote to do that. All you need to do is just say, it's just a suggestion, you know, Mike, which ones you like to do? Jason, which ones you like to do? Bill? And then if it's, if there's no duplication, fine, you guys have divvied it up. And if there's a couple that you don't take, well, you know, somebody else can take on.
Why don't we just do it this way? Why don't we all send to Mike and then if you see duplication.
Then you pick the appropriate person.
Then just, yeah, just figure it out.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
Let's just give it to Mike.
No, 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 no.
Mike, I'm doing it.
No, it's fine. Mikey likes it, it's fine.
I told you I don't like long discussions, so that's why I sent it to you.
Send to me what you want.
If you do get that list, would you kindly send it to me and so, and, and the department head so that.
Won't be secret.
Okay, so I'll let them know if there's an issue, you know, this is your, this is your board member liaison and the boards and committees that you're liaison to. Catherine will get, or I will get an email out to them and let them know you're liaison to them. That way, everybody knows who it is.
That's fine.
You know.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm not doing it to prevent them from going to you. If they're comfortable going for you, they can have at it. I don't have a problem with that at all. I just wanted to give an avenue to the employees that weren't comfortable going through you.
Yeah, that's fine.
And that would allow us to go through you to get the information for them.
That's fine.
Could we also say that these kind of going to's should be Google meetings? Right now, with the, what's going on with the virus, I really, we have such a limited staff. The less crossover, the less people in that town, the whole building, the better.
Yeah, I think everybody just pretty much does emails, texts and phone calls anyway.
Okay, so yeah, face-to-face meetings can, should be avoided if possible through, and do through Google Meet or Zoom. I mean, that's what we do at work. We're all in the school building, but we don't, we don't go to meetings.
I don't think we need to. I think if we agree that is what we can do, then we just go ahead and do it.
Well, I don't know that we all agree. I don't think Ed agrees.
On what's that?
Liaison.
Oh, oh, I see nothing wrong with liaisons, but not for day-to-day, not for day-to-day operations. They can't go to their liaison and get the problem solved.
No, because they can't reach me. Good luck.
No, but the way that Jason described it.
You can be my liaison.
Yeah.
I got to be that, Kathy.
All right, I'm just making sure because you had questions on it earlier.
So basically, I did have some questions for, on it.
I know.
But, so, so basically, if an employee doesn't feel comfortable going to Kevin, then he, then that person can go to the liaison and go through Kevin. Well, that wasn't the case in, in the past. It was always, they could always bring it to the members of the Board of Selectmen.
Well, he was, he was answering your question as to, it could take two weeks to get an answer on some question. With his thought process, you could still get an answer. With his thought process, you could still get an answer from Kevin, just not directly to Kevin, you'd go to the liaison to make that buffer, so.
Yeah.
ABC didn't have to do that if they didn't feel comfortable for whatever reason, Jason would take that question, have that meeting, and then take that information up to the, to Kevin, say, hey, this is the situation, what do you think? And then back down. It's not ideal, but it helps.
Defuse some possible situations.
Exactly. So, we're saying we don't have to vote on this, we're just going to accept it and then.
Send it all to you.
Send it all to me, and I'll solve the world's problems one at a time.
Thank you, world hunger.
And go on from there.
Do you want, you, you want it sent to you as far as what we're interested in?
Which boards?
Yeah.
Departments, yeah.
Which department?
Yep. Like I said, typically I took police and fire for years, I'm happy to continue doing that, I have a pretty good relationship with those guys, but I'm happy to take more too, so.
And I, I've done, I've done highway, library, CPA, I did cable TV, the CATV, but it, I thought it best that we, we go with somebody else, and members of the board weren't happy about the delay in the, the cable TV was, was going with the contract, so I, I think it's time for somebody else to think, they think they can do a better job, and let them step up and be the liaison to that.
But Ed, you had such a good idea, though, on the cable, with at least talking to the Electric Department, I would, I'd encourage you to maybe stay that liaison, just to talk to the Electric Manager.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, based upon the, the criticism that the board got on the board of selectmen, the, my feeling is that they didn't think that we were doing the job, they continually criticized the members of the board, this, uh.
Well, I'm not talking about the Cable Committee, I'm talking about just you going to the Electric Department with your idea, it is your idea, it was your idea.
They didn't like the fact that what, what we were doing, so let somebody that thinks that they can do a better job, as a member of the board, let them take it over.
Okay, so you don't want to pursue your idea.
I, I do, oh, oh, I'd, I'd still like to proceed with.
Your idea.
An alternative.
Yeah.
To the cable TV.
Right.
But, I, 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 I wasn't happy with the treatment from the board of selectmen slamming the, the Cable TV Committee for their dedicated hard work, again, volunteers, so let somebody else do it.
Well, I don't think we're going to be liaising with, we don't have a Cable Committee, so all I'm suggesting is, that's, I don't think that's going to be a liaison position anyway, but I just thought you had a good idea, you should keep going with it.
Well, and, you know, I, I asked if we could have that, uh, a meeting set up for next, uh, selectmen's meeting to go over that.
I'd be real interested.
I don't know if you were here, I don't know at what point that came up.
It was later.
But, uh, we, we got the information from the CATV that they were going up in their rates, and.
I did hear that.
They do that all the time.
Yeah.
And basically, we don't have much control over it, so I suggested, which I had done in the past, but it didn't go anywhere, that some of the municipalities that have their own electric company, the Municipal Electric, have run cable TV.
Yep.
Out of the electric, and they can offer, they can offer a faster speed internet because of the smaller group, it is expensive, so I just asked if we could invite the Electric Board or the manager in the next selectmen's meeting and see if they, if they have what it's going to cost, what's it going to cost to, to run the infrastructure? And my feeling is, if, if Comcast had some competition, the prices are going to go down. And, so, I know that we're, we're not going to be able to get the fiber optic cable in here, but maybe if we could see, see what they like, see what it's going to cost us from the electric company, and, and I'd rather be, as I stated, I'd rather be paying my bill to the Groveland Electric Company than to Comcast, at least you can get the good service.
We'll, we'll get them in here for you at the next meeting and you can have conversation. Mike, could I just ask the board a quick question in the two minutes we got left here? I heard Kathy said about the budget, the reason the budget isn't out, and I asked the FinCom to delay it by a month, is because we don't have the revenue estimates, state aid, state aid for the current fiscal year just got set a week ago.
That's always been the case, I mean, we've had those kind of delays in prior periods, I mean, I think just letting the budgets get put together is important.
Kathy, if I could finish, please.
Yeah.
The state budget never has been set four months into the year in which it is done, that has not happened in state history, except the last pandemic.
Okay.
This is unprecedented, the situation we're in right now, we don't, I've been talking to the, our State Senator and our State Rep, we don't have numbers yet. Now, I can sit down and write a budget, but I presumed that the board would want some input to what the budget's going to look like, and there's some questions that I need to ask you.
Yes.
And so, the 21st, that's, I'm going to ask Mike for agenda time to do that, so some of the questions I got to ask you is, there's not going to be enough money to have a rig, to have the same budget next year that you have this year, there's not, it's not even a close call. So, the question I got to ask the board is, are you willing to use one-time monies like stabilization-free cash for ongoing expenses in order to plug that gap? Those are questions I've got to ask you before I sit down and tell the departments to write budgets, because what am I telling them to write, a business-as-usual budget, a reduced budget, what, I don't know. So, that's why I sat down with them and said, could you postpone it for a month? Because their first department hearing was scheduled in three weeks, and I couldn't accommodate that if I wanted to talk to the board about the budget, and I did want to talk to you.
Right, well, we've always used one-time money, we've never balanced totally, I mean, we've been moving towards a better situation.
Not like you're going to be looking at it next year, Kathy, this is a different time.
So, could you just give us, can you give us that revenue forecast, like a week out from this meeting, and then, then we can just get to the answer about.
Yeah, I'm hoping to have that for the 21st.
I want a week ahead of that.
You want to make a motion to adjourn at 5:30?
That's next week.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we'll adjourn at 5:29.
Second.
Second. All the favor?
I'd like you to ask that information from Kathy.